Lord, we pray for your hand to be on our military personnel, keep them safe from harm. We pray for our nation's leaders, our state's leaders, our local leaders, that you would give them wisdom and discernment. Lord, we just thank you for all those who are involved and serve in the city government. We pray that you would be with them and strengthen them in their endeavors. We pray tonight that you would be with those who are widowed, those who are orphaned, who are sick and infirmed, and those who are in need. Help us to help where we can. And as we go from here this evening, be with us, keep us safe, help us do your will, and we'll give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
Thank you, Donald. Jordan, pledge allegiance. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Item one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum, second by Commissioner Salter. Yes?
I'd like to, is it C?
Yes.
I'd like to pull C for discussion or clarification.
Motion stand with C pulled. Ron?
Ron.
Your motion stand with C pulled?
Yes, it was.
And your second stand with C pulled?
Yes, it was.
Call the question. Motion carries five yea and one nay. Item one, C.
These are mayor, vice mayor commissioners. Can I answer some questions about?
Can you give us an overall description of what this, the benefit to this?
The fire station alerting system?
Yes. What it is and the benefit.
What it is, basically, it is the electronic system that will handle the call that comes from dispatch to that station. It will handle all of the notification for the firefighters inside the building. So part of it is stuff that we've always had, amplifier, speakers. We have speakers throughout each station so the guys can hear when a call comes over the radio. It'll tie into our Motorola radio system. It's everything but the radio. So it's the amplifiers and speakers. It's lighting that comes on at night when the firefighters are asleep. We'll have, when the tone goes off, it kicks the lights on so they can see to get out of the building. We have all that now. This will give us a commercial solution for that, so it's an improvement over what we have. In the past, what we've had is been tied to one individual that's retired, that designed all the stuff that we've had to have come back in and work on. So that's one thing that it does for us, is it gives us a commercial solution. The two big things that it really does, though, in addition to that, is it gives us the ability to dispatch individual stations. Right now, if the dispatcher needs to notify the fire department, they have to notify every station, have to wake up every guy at night. Sleep deprivation is becoming more and more of an issue. You know, when I started 20 years ago, you didn't have quite so many calls in the night. Now these guys are up all the time. And so if we don't need to wake up station one and station three, if we have a medical call in station two's area, then we just wake up station two, if that makes sense. This is needed to do that. So there's a dispatch piece that will go in the dispatch center with this installation. And then there's a piece that will go into the station, into the individual station. Another thing that it does for us is it gives us the ability, right now, our tone and our information go over the 100 megahertz radio system, which is good, but we don't have a backup for that. So if that were to go down, we don't have any other way of notifying, just cell phones, that kind of thing. This will give us the ability to, it will broadcast simultaneously, redundantly, all the time over IP and over internet, our internet protocol system, and over the 100 megahertz. So it's a dual delivery system for all the information coming from dispatch. In addition to that, it'll hopefully take some load off the dispatchers because what it gives us the ability to do now is with that dispatch piece, there's a text-to-speech option part in this thing. So when the dispatcher starts typing, they can go ahead and notify, it should shorten response times as well, because they'll go ahead and send the call to the station while they're typing. They don't have to, right now, they have to type and talk or type then talk. So it'll hopefully take some load off of them. You'll hear, you won't hear the dispatcher's voice giving the information, you'll hear an automated voice that picks up the information being typed into the system.
So this is sort of kind of covering all aspects of communication as well as the alarm itself?
It is. It really covers the entire aspect.
Just look deeply into the situations even that might be awkward and try and relieve those and make them sure and faster.
Yes, it's one, that's what we like about it, is it's one big piece that covers the entire communication for the station. The amount for the station, they're roughly the same amount. The station is 44,382.05, and that's for the entire thing, that's all the equipment, that's the amplifier, all the radio equipment, not the radios themselves, but the amplifiers, the speakers, the lights, all the speakers for the bay. And it will also have notification systems, so the televisions that are in the station will be tied into that system. So if a television is on, it will bring up a screen that will show a map of where the call is and show the time it was dispatched, the address, and that sort of thing. It'll break into the actual broadcast. It's set up to do that with these high-definition televisions now. So it will have a few televisions in the station, just monitors that are dedicated for that. So in the bedroom, we'll have one with the guys, when they're coming out, they can look at this and say, okay, it's right here, here's the address, just in case they, you know, didn't hear it clearly. So that's another improvement.
It does away with possible deniability, doesn't it?
It does, it does. And it also has a piece that lets us know as soon as the truck rolls so we can see how quick the guys are getting out of the station. They do a good job of getting out of the station in a hurry, but it'll give them a countdown clock. So our goal is to have the guys out of the station within 60 seconds when the tone goes off, even at night when they're in bed. So they'll see a countdown clock on these screens that'll tell them how good they're doing.
So this part is, we'll take care of dispatch in station two, and that sometime in the future, we're going to look at doing one and three?
Yes, sir. The 44,382.05 is for station two, and then the 43,540,34 is for dispatch. And that's a one-time thing, that we won't have to do that again. We will need to do roughly similar amounts. I've got quotes for station one and three. We'll have to retrofit them as well to be able to dispatch individually. This will be a step in the right direction. We just want to get this done while the walls are open on station two and everything. And it's something we wanted to do a little more research into and make sure we had the right vendor before we weren't ready to pull the trigger back when we were looking at the design of the building. So we talked to the architects, and they said it's not a problem to do this concurrently. You know, we're just going to contract with these individuals, with this company individually to install it while the construction is going on. The pricing has gone through, basically, it's like a state bid process, it's fire rescue GPO. There's a few of these out there that we have access to. We bought trucks on a different one, on the Houston-Galluston area contract. This is the same concept, and that's where the pricing comes from.
Chief, it certainly sounds like this is going to promote both efficiency and effectiveness of the alert system. Have you compared that to other city systems? Is there other city systems that have kind of had some outcomes of how effective this is working within them?
Absolutely, yes. We've talked with a lot of communities that have used these systems. We did a lot of research on the vendors. We had two vendors that we really liked. One vendor, their pricing was just outrageous. And this was the other vendor that we liked actually even more, and their pricing was much more reasonable, much more within line with what we saw. But yes, all the communities that you're seeing go to an ISO class one, which is the ultimate goal, where we want to go, we need to go to a two first. But all the communities that have an ISO class one, all the communities that are SIPSE accredited, all that kind of stuff, that's the kind of stuff you're seeing. It just gives you the efficiency and the tools, it gives you more tools to get out of the station. And it's very dependable. That's our system right now. It works well when it works, but there are times where it's just not dependable. And really, what it does right now, it just kicks the lights on in the bedroom. This is going to do a whole lot more. And it basically gives you a brain or control center for that station that controls everything. You can control the doors going up. If you want the doors to go off and to go up when the tone goes off, you can do that kind of thing with it, so pretty incredible.
Sounds good. Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. By Commissioner Shaw, second by Commissioner Rutherford. Any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries six ayes. Item two, citizens' participation. As usual, we have a three-minute per person limit and a 12-minute per topic limit. If you would like to speak and approach the podium, tell us who you are, and sign in, except in Holly's case, we know who Holly is.
I know.
Who you are?
Hi. Holly Gordon. And yeah. So trying to quickly write. I don't know how many of you may have noticed yet or not that Paul's Place Steakhouse here in Shawnee has become one of our newest Blue Zones-approved restaurants. They have some great additions to their menus. Yes, they still have great steaks, but they have some really good Blue Zones-inspired menu items for lunch and dinner. So we have some great things happening in our community for health and wellness, and that's just one of them. So I invite you to go over to Paul's, see Neil, and find out about the good things that are happening over there. That's it.
Thanks, Holly.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello?
Hello?
I cannot write and talk, so not a Polly. Hello? I'm Kate Joyce with the Shawnee Senior Center, and I wanted to tell you all about two things that mostly get it out there for the public. On March the 22nd, the Shawnee Senior Center will be hosting the DAV service van. And what that means is that any veterans who are having troubles with their claims can come, and someone will be there to help walk them through their claim and get it filed correctly with the DAV. They'll be there beginning at nine o'clock in the morning, and they will stay for as long as they have people. So please, if you know people that are having trouble, please share the word. I'm going to be putting a post on our Facebook page so that that can be shared as well, but that's a really important thing that we do at the Senior Center for our veterans. And the other thing is, we are, for Health Week, going to be doing a senior stroll. And it's open for the whole family. It's a one-mile walk. We will be going up Bell Street, down Bell Street, towards Main, and taking a right and going around the block of Broadway and back to the municipal auditorium exterior. So please join us. That's on April the 4th, and it'll be at five o'clock. We'll probably hit the bricks about 5:30 after check-in and everything. So I'll probably be up here to do this one more time this month, but I wanted to get it out. Isn't that the cutest logo?
It is.
And that will be on our T-shirt. It'll be awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Any questions?
No.
Very good. Item three, mayor's proclamation of Arbor Day.
Whereas Arbor Day is celebrated nationally to encourage Americans to maintain and replenish our peters backs, forests, forests, and woods. And whereas in March 1982, Oklahoma declared full arbor weed to better recognize the value of pre-playing as well as to avoid the harsh playing conditions of late winter. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious top oil by wind and water, reduce heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitats for wildlife. Trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business area, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city of Shawnee has been named as a 2017 Tree City USA community by the Arbor Day Foundation, this is the 16th year Shawnee has received its national recognition. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, contribute immeasurably to our wonderful city of which we are most proud. In honor of Arbor Day, the Shawnee Vehicle Convention Committee will be planning a tree at Fairview Cemetery located at 1401 Center Street on March 15th at four o'clock, and they would like to invite everybody to it. Now therefore, I am Richard Fennel, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, to hereby proclaim March 15th, 2018, as Arbor Day.
Item four, discussion and possible action regarding contract review committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission members, we have discussed this previously, and Commissioner Shaw had asked for an action item, I think, a little less than a year ago, as we had gone through our annual process. And as we've collected the information that's in your packet from the historical formation of this committee from 1993, looked at its original composition and criteria, we realized that I think it would be best going forward to have some clarification. And what we set forth in this memorandum in your packet is really a couple of options for the commission to consider. Number one, I think staff is able to kind of handle the routine renewals expeditiously and present those to the commission. We can do most of the work internally. If there's a particular contract that may require an additional examination, this body could always appoint a subcommittee of commissioners at some point, when and where needed. The second option is, if you believe that the committee has merit and you wish for it to continue, the present establishment of it probably needs a little bit of clarification. The minutes from 1993 and speak to a subcommittee of commissioners, it doesn't really speak to any at-large community members that serve in that role. And through the years, those positions have been added, but the commission's never approved a resolution or ordinance that kind of spills out that committee structure in a little bit better clarity. So really, just wanted to bring this up to your attention at this time of the year before we start this process, because there's still time to kind of internalize it and make it more of a staff-driven process, if that's the route the commission would like to go. Or conversely, if you'd like to keep the committee in its, basically, its current structure, but maybe formalize it a little bit more, then we'll need that feedback, too, before we start this process in the next couple of weeks. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll just turn it over to you.
I sat on the committee last year, and it seemed to me like the items that came through there were either so routine that they didn't need to be there, or that we had insufficient expertise on the committee to really deal with that. And I guess a case in point is the most recent insurance committee that we had, that we appointed, and I called in two members from the community to help us assess and assimilate that information. And my preference in terms of having a standing contract committee is to treat them in one of two ways. If they're so routine that we feel like staff can take care of them, they can make a recommendation to us. They've all got to come back to us anyway. Secondarily, if we feel like if it's a construction issue or an issue of any expertise that we don't have among the commission members, I would prefer to appoint kind of a task force to sit in on those, and I think we can draw upon the assets and the attributes of the committee. The two people that I had sit in on the health insurance were tremendously helpful, gave us a lot of insight into things that those of us who don't deal with that on a day-to-day basis, I found it to be very helpful. So that's kind of the genesis of my thoughts. And if there are other thoughts or discussions or questions?
I agree with you, by the way. Sean, of course, I've served on it a long time, and in the past, we've had to eliminate some proposals and to explain those and so forth, and it'd be easier to do that in a committee setting than it is in, and it'd be easier for if the commission's represented on that committee. And we've also not funded some programs for various reasons, and it's easier to handle that in a non-public stance than it is to handle it in a public stance. And another reason I'd like to see it continued is we're losing two of our people that have served on that committee, and that's the Indian fellow. So I know the attorney's new, and it was new last year, but anyhow, the attorney advises on whether we can legally, you know, spend money for those purposes or not. And so, I mean, it serves a purpose if we didn't, same kind of routine last year. In some other years in the past, it has not been. So we've had to request additional information and so forth. So I'd like to see it continued or some kind of form thereof to continue. And I feel like it's not, you know, we should push all of that off on staff. And I mean, some of it's our responsibility, and so I would like to see it continued myself.
Mayor, and I certainly appreciate what you said in regard to always putting it before the city. And Vice Mayor, I have to go along with you on this one in respect to the fact that I believe that it would take some of the pressures off of our city staff, but it also needs to be a formalized structure. We need to give these individuals the, remove the liability and ensure that whatever function that they're doing on behalf of the city, that it's been an authorized body that is doing this. So having said that, I would like to make the suggestion to the city manager that we look at formalizing this structure and that we consider putting some more up-to-date language in it, that we consider some selection factors or some ranking and rating factors within the body of this, so that when we evaluate these, that we're both objective and fair consistently.
Do we have the option of keeping the contract review committee and formalizing it like we were talking about? Does that mean everything goes to the committee? Or we're going to have a structure for a committee that will be appointed specializing in, you know, what type of entity we're going to send to it?
From a protocol standpoint, where are we? Does everything now go to that committee?
No, it's just the community service contracts.
Community service contracts.
Yeah. Which is a pretty narrow subset of city contracts on the basis.
SEDF?
Yes, sir, yes.
Senior Center. Do we have one with HARD, Project HARD?
No, sir. So we have six contracts currently. Economic Development Foundation, Safe Events for Families, Senior Citizens of Shawnee, Central Oklahoma Transit System, Historic Shawnee Alliance, and Visit Shawnee. So those are the six. And that's been, I think, very typical for maybe three years in a row now.
But I've also seen other contracts go on in review under this as well. So it's not just those that you've mentioned, but there has been others. So if we're going to consistently use this kind of body, then we need to give it the authority and sanction it to do so. And if we don't, such as what the mayor is saying, and we put it before the city each time, at least the people in the community will get to see what we're doing and get to have a better understanding of why we came to those decisions. And I'd like to say thank you, Commissioner Gillum, because I saw that you were a part of that process that put those established guidelines into place 25 years ago, so.
25 years ago. But who's counting?
That's right, that's right.
Other questions, comments?
I think you don't put that as a form of a motion, Commissioner Shaw.
I'd like to make the motion that we direct staff to formalize the contract review committee through the creation of a formal resolution or ordinance to be considered by the city commission at the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Could you repeat that, please?
You have it right here. It's up to line two in the recommendation. I'll give it to you.
Any further discussion? Call the question. Do we need to read the resolution again before we vote? Everybody understand what we're voting on?
We need to reread the question.
Yeah, reread.
I'm making the motion to direct staff to formalize the contract review committee through the creation of a formal resolution or ordinance to be considered by the city commission at the next meeting.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Please call the question. Motion carries has five yea and one nay. Item five, discussion and consideration of consulting agreement with Ensurica to provide insurance, consulting, and employee benefits services to the city of Shawnee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission members, in your packet this evening is a consulting agreement with Ensurica. Ensurica has provided these services for the city for approximately 10 years or so. We went through a comprehensive review process that included a public solicitation that resulted in submittals by four very professional firms that specialize in employee benefits and have lots of experience with municipal and government clients. On January 16th, after those, or as those were coming in, on January 16th, the commission established a subcommittee to review those submitted proposals. That subcommittee met and personally interviewed all four of those firms in person. And upon review and analysis, consensus was made to select Ensurica. It was a very close discussion deliberation. They were all very, very good firms, I think would have done a good job for the city. But it is our recommendation to award this contract to Ensurica in the amount of $30,000. This contract will be for one year and will be presented annually to the commission for review and approval.
Are there any provisions in there to continue it, or you don't have to technically have to every year?
You can renew with Ensurica for, yes, sir, you could. And what most cities do is maybe have an interval of maybe every two or three years of going through a solicitation process. It's kind of an elaborate process. You typically wouldn't do it every year, but it is at the pleasure of the commission.
Some of the proposals were multi-year.
Yes, sir.
That we received, so they're not, there's no standard particularly.
We've worked with Ensurica when I've served on the staff committee, and I've never, I mean, the representative does a great job, and the company all provides. And I don't know about bringing people in from their company when they need help. I have them on a SNL board in Oklahoma City, and we have five branches, and we use not the same contract, but the insurers are representative of them for our employees, too. So yeah, I think it'd be a good deal. I'd move that we hire the insurer.
Moved by Commissioner Herring to execute with Ensurica. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries six zero. Item six, discussion relating to the calling of an election to amend section two of article three of the city charter regarding electing city commissioners at large. This is an item that Commissioner Shaw and I had kind of discussed between the two of us. She's been pushing this for some time, and I brought it up at the meeting last week. And the reason I put it on here is really not to debate it among ourselves at this point, but to instruct the staff to gather some information regarding what other cities are doing and really just make the public aware that we are considering this and will at some future point. There's absolutely no urgency about this because we don't have enough time between now and the upcoming elections for this to be effective. So it's, on a best-case basis, it's going to be a couple of years down the road before this impacts anything. But it gets it out there on the horizon, we can discuss it, debate it, and talk among...
So it'll be discussed at the next meeting, then?
It can be discussed, really, whenever it can come back up. I don't particularly care when it gets discussed because we don't have a timing issue on it. I'd like to give the public plenty of time to give us some feedback and to talk among ourselves. There's a little bit of homework that needs to be done in my mind, in pulling the precinct votes and kind of seeing, my initial... My initial concern was that a very small number of votes could call an election. Without getting into the arguments to and from, we just need, I think, to publish that.
Smaller electorate tends to, larger electorate overcomes anomalies, whereas a smaller number can be controlled much more easily.
That, that's the argument and I understand.
We can get into it very deeply and I have a lot of issues about that. We can talk about when the times are.
Yeah. So, it's just to make the public aware that we're talking about this and we'll be debating it and.
And I might add at that with a caveat, I'm not intending to run again in 2020. Has nothing to do with me.
Well, I'd like to say several things here.
You got the floor.
One is that the mayor is very gracious in putting this before us because he and I had rather a heated debate over this as Commissioner Gillum and I have as well. This is an action that was placed before the city commission about a year ago and it was done by a very informed and logic-based individual by the name of Linda Agee. And she did an actual study. She went out to 20 cities and she, she did some fact-finding. And this was given to us as city commissioners. This was all here and I'd like to read into the record what she said. "A little over a year ago, I contacted mayors and councilors in about 20 cities throughout the state to see how they elected their councilors and commissioners and how they and their constituents felt about the arrangement. All of them with ward elections expressed satisfaction and said overall their constituents were very happy with it too. Some of the cities elected all commissioners by ward while a few elected one or two commissioners at large and the remainder by ward. Almost all of them elected the mayor at large. From past comments I have heard, I know some of you may be opposed to the idea of elections by ward, but I hope you will take time to review the two attachments." And then she provided a list of the cities that she communicated with and I'd like for the city manager to place these on our website so that anyone and everyone can see that this was a survey done by a former city commissioner with the assistance, I believe, of the city manager. She's also listed a number of the pros and cons that should be considered in doing some type of action to, to the extent that this could be done. And I think it's very fact-based. I don't think I need to argue the point at all. I think that what she has illustrated here is very clear and concise and I would certainly encourage that we let, leave this to our public and get some public comments on and let them sway that decision so that we as the city body up here don't debate it among ourselves because it's.
I can't mention one thing very clearly, that had that been in effect, the previous election, this commission would be entirely different than it is right now.
That may well be the case, but that would probably be the consensus of the people that represented those wards and they have that right, in my opinion. That is my opinion.
What we have existing here in Shawnee is a powerful neighbor who did have issues in the last election and spent an awful lot of money to create an anomaly that normally wouldn't be, occurred naturally in most, 19 of those cities, probably over 20 of them. Secondly, that probably don't have a situation where a single ward separated 20%, 80% by 10 miles of road. So, there are other things that exist here that would have to be looked at.
You know, if we have a powerful neighbor in this area, we should consider that as a brotherly neighborhood thing because we have demographics that indicate that our population may be predominantly white, but our next largest race is American Indian. So, let's keep that in mind as we continue.
Let's also make it clear that I appreciate our tribes and we are dependent upon those tribes for our welfare to a great degree and the jobs and the income for this community. So, I'm not trying to change that. I'm just saying a larger electorate tends to even out anomalies.
For to the next meeting, we have time.
Okay, we can defer, we can do amendment by interlineation.
Do we need a motion to reconsider item seven?
Seven.
Seven, seven was the ordinance and I apologize, Commissioner. I thought, when you said resolution, I thought we were moving to eight. So, the same language is in both seven and eight. Scrivener error to, should be appointment instead of election. So, we can amend by interlineation and let's just pass them today.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay. So, we'll need a motion to revisit agenda item seven.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to revisit agenda item seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rutherford. Now, what is it you're suggesting?
At that point, if, it's in the ordinance head where it calls for election, that should read appointment, that's a scrivener's error. So, if the motion is made to pass the ordinance with an amendment by interlineation to appointment where it refers to election and a second, then that would be an appropriate vote.
So, in the next to the last sentence, election becomes appointment?
Correct.
And that's the only change?
No.
That's in two places on the second line and the next to the last line.
I mean, you could. That's, that's a legislative function, not a.
Is there any reason why we shouldn't just change the word election to appointment in those two places?
No, that's.
Is there necessity in having, conducted by the Potawatomi County, election board should just be stricken beyond that point?
That's a necessity. Do you need that in there?
We need to vote on, back it up on seven and then start over.
Motion to reconsider item seven. Call the question. Motion carries six, ayes, no nays.
I'd like to make the motion, Mayor, to defer item number eight to the next meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Shaw to defer.
First, seven.
We're on seven.
I thought we already did.
We just re.
We just undid it.
Seven and eight, did we do that?
No, we can do seven. That's where we're in.
Let's defer item number seven to the next meeting.
Motion to defer item number seven. Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Is there a motion to change the, the word election in the second line and the next to the last line to appointment?
Maybe change that wording.
Commissioner Hare moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Any further discussion? Read the new title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance related to the terms of mayor and city commissioners and election of the vice mayor amending section four and section six of article three of the charter of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, changing the time for the beginning of the terms for the mayor and city commissioners to conform with election dates and setting the time for appointment of vice mayor and setting the effective date and providing for severability.
Still stated election in the first line.
I apologize. I, I think the motion is to change out election to appointment in all instances referring to the vice mayor.
Correct.
So, election to appointment.
In all instances.
Okay, in all instances referring to the vice mayor.
Correct.
Okay.
Which would require then that this is an ordinance related to the terms of mayor and city commissioners and appointment of the vice mayor amending section four and section six of article three of the charter of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, changing the time for the beginning of terms for the mayor and the city commissioners to conform with the election dates and setting the time for appointment of vice mayor and setting the effective date and providing for severability.
Correct. Five yays, one abstention. Item eight, consider a resolution calling for and providing for the holding of a general election in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma for the purpose of adopting an ordinance amending section four and section six of article three of the charter of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, changing the time for beginning of the terms for the mayor and city commissioners to conform with the election dates and setting the time for appointment. Of the vice mayor providing for said election to be conducted by Potawatomi County Election Board and providing for voting by absentee ballot. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And that would be with Commissioner Rutherford, the amendment by interlineation to replace all instances of election of vice mayor with appointment?
Yes.
Two seconds. Commissioner Hare, second.
He read it in, so, yeah.
Is there any further discussion?
Just so we're clear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution calling for and providing for the holding of a general election in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma for the purpose of adopting an ordinance amending section four and section six of article three of the charter of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, changing the time for the beginning of terms for the office for mayor and the city commissioners and also providing for the dates of appointment of the vice mayor, providing for said election to be conducted by the Potawatomi County Election Board and providing for voting by absentee ballot.
Any further discussion? Call the question.
Joe, any clarification, please, on the areas that will be corrected on this resolution?
Specifically, Commissioner, that would be that which was read into the resolution title, the change there from election to appointment. Additionally, in the third recital, whereas as a further result of the changes, the vice mayor is appointed annually on the first Monday and the month following the election. Recognize that change. And I believe that that would be.
There's one more. Section two more. Top paragraph, second page, and then the top of section two.
Yes. The section two, where it refers to elect the vice mayor, that would be appoint the vice mayor. And proposition two. And the heading where it reads that the vice mayor shall be elected, that would be changed to appointed. I believe that would be it in that resolution, Commissioner.
Call the question.
Do you want me to clear it and call it again? Because I had already called it.
We did?
Yeah, I think we need to do that.
Okay, I'll clear it and call it again.
Call the question. Motion carries five yea, one abstention. Item nine, consider an ordinance relating to the calling of an election amending section seven of article 14 of the charter of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, changing the method of ordering and holding, ordering the holding of elections by resolution, which conforms to state law and setting the effective date and providing for severability.
So, nine and 10 are interrelated and we've talked about this before too. These were deferred from August 21st and you might recall that our city charter requires that we, that you pass an ordinance for any election items, whereas state law and the county election board says a resolution will do. But because we have that language in our charter, we have to do both, which is why your last two actions, when you make an amendment on something, it can be more cumbersome because you've got to do it twice through two documents. So, what nine and 10 do, one via ordinance and one via resolution, is submit to the voters an amendment to city charter that allows us to default to the state law and to what the county election board mandates, which is a call simply by resolution. So, if you pass nine and 10 and voters pass it in June, then you'll never see another ordinance on here. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'd like to say I did that last one on purpose just to drive that point home.
Is there a motion to approve?
I guess I need clarification on this, Joe. I know that this is article 14 and when I pulled the code of ordinances, this truly does change our method. That language is new that's under there. Was that our intent on sections one, two and three? To change from what the original language was in the ordinance?
In the charter, yes, that's the intent.
It doesn't weigh, it doesn't weigh with the requirement to have an ordinance.
Yeah, manager was. Because state law only requires a resolution, we have an additional requirement essentially. And so, it's creating duplication as we're seeing in these sets of ordinances and resolutions.
Also causes a recodification problem, doesn't it?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, I think there was whatever concern that I had on that and I must admit that I've forgotten what my question was. I guess I'll just abstain from that. Some of the technicality that I saw on there, Joe, my apologies, I should have marked it. That's all right, proceed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
You made the motion, you can't second your own motion.
Oh, I thought this, he made the same motion.
Is there a second? Chair seconds. Call him. Read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just take the line to get to it. I was just trying to figure it out.
An ordinance related to the calling of an election amending section seven of article 14 of the charter of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, changing the method of ordering the holding of elections by resolution, which conforms to state law and setting the effective date and providing for severability.
Call the question. Motion carries five yea, one abstention. Item 10, consider a resolution calling for and providing for the holding of a general election in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma for the purpose of adopting an ordinance amending section seven of article 14 of the charter of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, changing the method of ordering the holding of elections by resolution, which conforms to state law and providing for said election to be conducted by Potawatomi County Election Board and providing for voting by absentee ballot. Is there a motion?
I can make another motion without seconding it.
Commissioner Hare. Move. Commissioner, Commissioner Gillum, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Call the question.
Briefly read that in, Mayor. Thank you. A resolution calling and providing for the holding of a general election in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma for the purpose of adopting an ordinance amending section seven of article 14 of the charter of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, changing the method of ordering the holding of elections by resolution, which conforms to state law, providing for said election to be conducted by the Potawatomi County Election Board and providing by, for voting by absentee ballot.
Now, call the question. Motion carries six, five ayes and one nay. Item 11, consider an ordinance calling for a general and runoff election for Ward one, Ward five and Ward six.
This is just a routine, routine matter of business, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. We do have those three wards that are up for election this June.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Rutherford, is there a second? By Commissioner Gillum. Is there any further discussion? Do you have to read?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance calling and providing for the holding of a general and runoff election in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma for the purpose of nominating and electing candidates for the office of city commissioner of the first ward, city commissioner of the fifth ward and city commissioner of the sixth ward, establishing a filing period and qualifications for such offices, designating the manner of electing the various city offices named herein, providing for said elections to be conducted by the Potawatomi County Election Board, providing for voting by absentee ballot, providing for severability and declaring an emergency. an emergency.
Call the question. Motion carries five ayes and one nay. Is there a motion for, to adopt the emergency clause? Moved by Commissioner Hare, and seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Do we need to read anything? Call the question.
I don't know, is the emergency clause on a...
This is item, second part of eleven. Motion carries five ayes and one nay. Consider, item twelve, consider a resolution calling for a general and runoff election for Ward One, Ward Five, and Ward Six. Is there any discussion among the board, other than what Commissioner Shaw has called the attention of counsel?
And Commissioners Mayor, Commissioner Shaw has highlighted language that can be found on the second page of the ordinance and the top paragraph of the second page, and I'll just read it for ease. If one of the two candidates nominated for an office dies or removes from the city or from his ward, the remaining candidate is elected ipso facto and shall be issued a certificate of election, and his name shall not appear upon the general, general runoff election ballot. So you wanted that drawn to attention.
I just wanted them to be aware of that, how this has changed from the original language, in case you weren't aware.
That's actually not a change.
I think the ballots had already been printed.
Yeah, I, we're not changing the language.
I didn't see it so factually.
In, in August, were we talking about?
Again, that's my discussion item, but you've already passed that, so...
Is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Hare, is there a second?
And actually, I give credit where credit's due, Commissioner Shaw has already pointed out that in the ordinance title, there's a typo, and in the last sentence, where it refers to, oh, I'm sorry, that's on the resolution. We're on the resolution, correct?
Yes.
And the, in the resolution title, excuse me, it says "beard," where it should say "board," so if the motion would include correction of that.
Your motion include correction of that, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Salter. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Harret.
A resolution calling and providing for the holding of a nonpartisan general and general runoff elections in the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, for the purpose of nominating and electing candidates for the offices of city commissioner of the first ward, city commissioner of the fifth ward, and city commissioner of the sixth ward, establishing a filing period and qualifications for such offices, designating the manner of, of electing various city, city offices named herein, providing for said elections to be conducted by the Potawatomi County Election Board, providing for voting by absentee ballot.
Call the question. Motion carries five ayes, one nay. Item thirteen, discussion and possible action to direct staff to prepare an ordinance and resolution relating to the calling of an election for the purpose of a one-half cent sales tax for June twenty-six, twenty-eighteen, general election. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion? Chair moves. Second by Commissioner Hare.
Only discussion I have is, you know, to the city management's that, make sure we publicize the project that's going to be included, and make sure that in the future those projects are all carried out, and then, what's, one question is, what's the length of time on the half cent? Is it permanent, or is it going to be...
I mean, you all make that determination when, when we finalize the, the ordinance, so you'll have a chance to look at that. We had talked, talked at the workshop on, on March first about a ten-year term.
Five to ten, or something, seven, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think ten years was the maximum that, that was discussed. Regarding the, the projects, I think what would be best, in conjunction with the ordinance, you know, we can specify broadly the ratios, like we talked about, twenty-five percent, for public safety, twenty-five percent for streets and roads, fifty percent for facilities. We can embed that language in the, in the ordinance itself, if you'd like to be that specific, and then secondarily, you all can adopt a, a project list, a kind of a sample list of projects, so that we can take that to the public, that it's been endorsed by you officially, and so we can, we'll prepare all that for, hopefully, if not the next meeting, it would be the first meeting in, in April.
Any other questions, comments? Call the question. I've made the motion, and Harret second. Five ayes, one abstention. Is there any new business?
No, sir, there's not.
Commissioners comments?
Yeah, I'd like to mention one thing, I think, they, I saw something that reminded me about why we do things, as, for society, for our progeny that's coming after us, that one example was, I saw that selflessness is an old man planting a tree who's shade he'll never experience. And I thought about that, and I, there's so many people planting trees, and that would be, I'll look at the castle workers, for instance, at the case workers and so on, I've been involved in situations where I, I saw them at, at, let's say, a stressful job that they do, and doing such a wonderful job for it. Of course, castle workers are unpaid, and they may have six, five or six different cases that they would go before the court in order to look out for the welfare of, of these younger people, but I think we, at times, need to look at those people who are giving selfless to their times, planting trees or planting seeds that maybe they can't experience, but the future will give them benefits from, or all of us benefits from.
I'd like to, we're talking about all the election rules and everything else, there was a bill in the Senate that didn't get out of the committee, and that was that cities and school districts couldn't call special elections, except on election day, so, our representative, or, I'm sorry, the House bill, our representative, was one of the ones that kept it from getting out of, out of the committee, so we can, I explained to him that we pay for the election, the school districts pay for the election, so if we want to have one, you know, it's up to the commissioner, up to the school board, and if they want to pay for them, so I'm very, you know, I was very happy with his decision to vote against it, and therefore we can continue with our elections, as we always have.
My turn? It's your turn.
Citizen Academy, this was brought to my attention today, and I thought it was worth sharing, I hadn't heard of it before, the police department, I believe, used to be the police, Citizen Police Academy. It's, one, two, I'm, I'm kind of winging this, it's four days in March, some evenings, a couple hours in the evening, a couple hours in the days. The first one, March the fifteenth, local government structure, how city and state governments operate, I believe you're going to speak at that.
I am. I was there last night, actually.
And then Senator Ron Sharpe speaks after, March the seventeenth, Parks and Recreation's going to be there making a presentation, James is going to do that, nonprofits will be there that day, Economic Development, March the twenty-second, Tim Berg's going to do a presentation, then Technology, Steve Nolan, and then Police Fire and React, March the twenty-fourth, it's, it looks like a pretty good thing for people to participate in, to learn what all is going on with all different aspects, aspects of the city, and I'd like to encourage people to look into that and, and participate in it. If we promote that a little bit, I think it's a really good, a really good thing.
Very good. Agreed.
You know that several of you have mentioned some of the state actions and some of the local actions, and I'd like to just reiterate that our teachers are out there struggling, and if you can encourage your legislators to support certain actions, that would improve the, the health and well-being for our teachers, I'd certainly appreciate it, because these teachers really do struggle.
They'll come. We are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. Item one, consider approval of the consent agenda. Second, moved by Commissioner Gillum, second by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any discussion? Call the question. If you're in favor of the consent agenda on the Shawnee Airport Authority, I'm sure you are. Motion passes, five ayes and one abstention. Item two, discussion, consideration, and possible action to authorize staff to engage services for fuel system repairs and staff training.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, you're first. Happy to answer any questions. Is there any discussion on this item?
Has this been coming for a while, or did we get caught off guard with where we stand on our fuel system, or fuel delivery and everything, or...
Mr. Rutherford, I've been here six weeks, I think it's been, so I was a little...
I started to clarify that, I knew you were, you were new, so I didn't...
So I can give you a six-week view on it, which is that we did have a small issue that brought this to our attention, but then we did have a regularly scheduled quality control visitation from our fuel provider, Phillips sixty-six, which is, it happens every two years, and so on that two-year mark, they come and help us to assess all of our equipment and our procedures, and make recommendations for improvements. So my personal history on it is very short-term, but I would suggest that it, it is a standard two-year inspection, and each time that happens, of course, the recommendations are made.
I appreciate the detail you put into your memo in regard to this, I certainly like it when staff show the reason and the basis for their actions, so thank you for that detailed account. Is this going to have any negative impact to your budget, or since this is something that's just...
We may have to look at some of the other places to come back. But if, basically, correct me if I'm wrong, if we do not fix this, we can't sell fuel, so that...
I read that, so, yes.
Got to have the fuel.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Harret. Further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries with six ayes. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Consider a motion to approve the consent agenda. By Commissioner Harret. This is kind of a sleepy crowd tonight, second by Commissioner Salter. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries five ayes and one abstention. Is there any new business?
No, sir, there is not.
We are adjourned. Yes, sir.